Welcome to the December 7th Select Board Meeting. Please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker, this Select Board meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are meeting online via Zoom Web Conference. This meeting is being livestream and cable broadcast by the Easton Community Access Television, which is Comcast 98, Verizon 23, and on ECAT's website at www.eastoncat.org. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email mblanchard@easton.ma.us or pose your question on the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure that we have a forum.
Craig Barger.
Tom Broussard.
Chuck King.
Mark Lamb.
And Dottie Full Genetti. All right, great. We, the first item that we have is a timed public hearing. So Craig, if you want to read the public hearing notice?
Pull it out. In accordance with Chapter 44 of the Easton Town Code, the Easton Select Board will hold a public hearing via remote participation using the Zoom platform at 6:00 PM on Monday, December 7, 2020. Instructions for accessing this remote hearing will be provided on the meeting agenda available on the Town of Easton's website at least 48 hours prior to the start of the hearing. The hearing will include a discussion and determination as to whether the 2021 Annual Town Election should be rescheduled, provided it is not before April 15th and not later than April 30th of 2021. Interested residents will have the opportunity to present either oral or written information on their views. Those wishing further information may contact the Select Board's office.
Perfect. So Connor and Danielle, do you want to walk us through this?
Sure, I'll just do a quick introduction and then turn it over to Danielle. So in what was probably a record, the Attorney General's Office approved the Bylaw Amendment that Town Meeting voted on last Monday, I think by Wednesday. So we are here tonight for the public hearing under our new meetings by law to speak with the Board and review Danielle's recommendation that the annual town election in April next year take place on Saturday, April 24th. So I'll just turn it over with that to Danielle. There's a memo in your packet that outlines most of this. But Danielle, do you want to just give a quick overview of why we are recommending that Saturday?
Sure. Good evening, hi everybody. As you're aware, you know, we're continuing with issues with COVID-19 and we went forward with this potential bylaw for just these types of cases. It will be really difficult to have an election on a Tuesday, utilize the schools and both of the gyms as we have been doing for the last several elections to help promote social distancing. And so we did look at four different dates in between the April 15th and the April 30th date. Those are listed as Tuesdays and Saturday dates inside of that memo. Did have consultation with both the DPW and with several people within the schools and looking for a recommendation from them on what would be best. And all parties agreed that the best date to recommend would be Saturday, April 24th. That allows with school vacation week, the week prior, that allows the DPW enough time, ample time, to be able to do the setup that, as you can imagine, with two gyms is taking much longer than it did with just one gym. And that would cause no disruption to the students at that same time. So I'd like to recommend that you vote to change the date from the 27th, which would have been the 4th Tuesday and the original date in April, to Saturday, three days before that, April 24th. In regards to timing, Mass General Law, 54 Section 64, only requires that a local election be a minimum of four hours. And as you're familiar with, because this is our second Saturday election that we've had, you folks have voted each of those times to make that be a six hour. And in 2021, that was from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. You don't have to vote that now. The time could wait, but I would recommend that you, you know, you look at both of them and potentially vote both of them tonight.
Sure. Any questions from the Board, starting with you, Chuck? I'm sorry, Craig?
No, I just want to say that once again, how much we appreciate the efforts that you and your staff and your volunteers have put in over the last year, Danielle.
Thank you, Craig.
I have no questions, Dani.
Well?
The only question I have is if for some reason there had to be a cancellation or adjustment, what would be the backup date for it?
So the only time that you can make a change is through a court order. So if you remember last year, we, you know, we potentially had to go that route for a special election, but the legislation changed in time. So without, you know, legislation that would provide you, as it did last year, the ability to have the flexibility to change the date, a court order would be the necessary route to take.
I guess I'm just trying to plan for a worst case in if there was some COVID or pandemic or some consideration or something happened, the facility fell through, how, what would be our, what would happen then? How would we have to, how could we ensure safety if we needed to, to get a backup facility type thing?
Well, there is currently legislation to kind of extend some of the fall 2020 legislation that hasn't passed yet, but Section 99, that is, I believe, ready for a vote or was Friday or this week. In the legislation would extend some of the things that were in the legislation for 2020 elections, including the ability for Select Boards to move polling locations in the event that that was needed. Obviously, already in consultation with the schools, I don't think that that's something that we have to worry too much about.
Got it.
What I will mention is that vote by mail has not yet been extended into April. That legislation that I just mentioned only goes through elections from March 31st. I have been in touch with Senator Feingold's office, the Chairman of Elections, the Joint Committee on Elections, and they're thinking that that will be extended as time goes on. But, and I've recommended that they try to do that in March, at least giving a month's notice so residents can get ballots. So that would be our contingency plan in regards to COVID still being an issue.
Got it. Perfect. I'm good. I think it's a great idea on the face of it, so.
Chuck, do you have any questions?
I see no problem with it, and I also commend Danielle and her staff for the great work they've been doing.
Thanks, Chuck.
And Mark?
So, I mean, this seems very logical. It's easier, safer during COVID times. Does this only apply for this election? Or is this a bylaw that's set in perpetuity?
So the way the bylaw was written, it allows through a public hearing, it allows the Select Board every year, should they choose.
Every year, okay.
If you choose to, every year through a public hearing, has to be done before the December 31st date. And that was really strategic, because as you all know, candidate packages and nomination papers are usually available in the beginning of January and require quite a bit of time in the entire calendars based off of the election date. And that's why we chose to have it done as early as we did. But you certainly, you know, there's been talk before about potentially moving elections to Saturdays, and that certainly with a public hearing is something that you, you folks can do if you wanted to in the future.
And obviously, this only applies to annual town elections, because we can't, the state determines all other states. That's more for the public, in case they were wondering. No, this seems very logical, very responsible, and yeah, makes sense.
I think this is something that comes up often where members of the public ask, why can't we have the election on a Saturday? So I think that we had a pretty successful turnout the last time that we did this. I think it's, you know, because we're talking about public safety and not having the election on the same day that kids are in school due to COVID, whether it's COVID or anything else, I think it really makes sense not to have the election on a day when kids are in school for security reasons and for a number of things. And I think it does give people the opportunity to be there. If we had mail-in as well, that would even be better. So I'm very happy to do that. I think the window of 10 to 4 is very reasonable.
Right.
You know, and I think, you know, I was really thinking a lot about the poll workers and how hard they work and how early they're there and how late they're there. That's a really long day. And I appreciate all the poll workers who have done that in addition to your staff. But I don't see a need to have an election until 8 o'clock. I think 10 to 4 is very, very good amount of time.
Especially on a Saturday. If it was a weekday, then I would understand having to have them open later, you know, after people get home from work, but on a Saturday, yeah.
Right.
So if somebody would like to make a motion to have.
I'm sorry, just because we do have some participants here and it's a hearing, I would just recommend that we confirm no one has any feedback they want to formally submit before you.
Sorry, didn't even notice that.
Sorry.
Is there anyone in the participants that has any questions or comments on this that would like to put a question through the chat function? Or the Q&amp;A function, I should say? I don't see anything.
Good.
All right. So now we do take a vote on this for the date and time, right?
Yes, I would ask, Danielle, correct me if I'm wrong, a vote to change the date of the annual town election to Saturday, April 24th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Yeah.
High School.
At Oliver Ames High School?
Oliver Ames High School. So moved.
Second, Broussard?
Barger Broussard, and all in favor, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes. All right, great. Thank you so much, Danielle, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you, Danielle.
Night.
Good night.
Next, we are going to have a presentation by the Human Rights Committee. And we have Elizabeth Bornstein to lead us through that.
Good.
Good evening, Liz.
Good evening. I got, when I switched over, I missed what you were saying, Dottie. Do you want me to just go ahead?
Well, welcome to the meeting tonight, and you're here to talk to us about listening sessions and a community art contest.
Yes. Thank you very much for making space for the Human Rights Committee. Again, we really appreciate it. We wanted the Select Board to know some more firm details from the update I had provided recently. So we have two events that are happening, that we're launching this month. So one is our next listening session, which is on religion. So our first listening session, we had partnered with RMK and the library and other town organizations in late spring and early fall to have a listening session about race. Our current listening session this month is about religion, and so the focus is to hear from people who are non-Christians about their experience navigating what is primarily a Christian society where we live. So this talk is going to happen next Thursday, the 17th. And in addition to community members speaking from a Jewish, a Muslim, a Hindu, and Wiccan perspectives, we will have a professor from Stonehill, Mary Joan Leith, giving sort of contextual context for various world religions and the similarities and the differences where they branch out.
Terrific. And where do people find, how do they join this? What kind of instructions do you have there?
Yeah, so the information is on our website. So if you go to the Town's website and look under Boards and Committees and click on Human Rights Committee, you'll see the information there, which has both the flyer, which welcome to share on your own personal social media or with your own networks. And it also has the registration link, which is on Eventbrite. So it will be a Zoom meeting for people to listen and ask some questions at the end.
Terrific.
And then our second initiative, we're really excited about, is an art campaign where we are hosting a contest for the community with specific help from the Art Club at Oliver Ames High School to design a logo for our committee that represents the committee's values of diversity and inclusion and standing up against actions of bigotry or intolerance. And our hope is that, once we have the finalists for these new logo designs, we're going to open the vote up to the community to pick what they feel is the image that best represents what the Human Rights Committee stands for. And then we would like to distribute these throughout town. So as stickers for kids to put on water bottles and laptops, as decals for residents and businesses to put, you know, in the front window of their establishment, as car magnets. We want it to be a visible symbol around town of people who stand in support of the mission of the Human Rights Committee.
Great idea.
Great idea.
Love it.
Great idea. And, you know, our artists at the high school are just incredible. So I think that that really brings in the youth and the businesses and people, just the general residents in the town that care about these issues. So I think you've nailed it on that, that's really exciting.
Thank you, we're very excited about it. We've gotten a lot of enthusiastic partnership from the schools, from the Easton Chamber of Commerce. We're in the process of reaching out, the Y, I think, is on board, the library, Alliance Club. So there are a lot of great avenues. And I want to reiterate, this information is also available on our website. We welcome submissions from everyone in the community, even though we're kind of seeding it with a high school art club, because we know that's the artistic choir, so to speak.
Right.
Also, Dottie, I've also reached out to, besides the Old Colony Y, I've reached out to the Interfaith Council here in Easton to see if they would partner with us on this endeavor, as well as participate in partnering and collaborating on the grant proposal, which I think Liz will talk to a little bit from the Cultural Council.
Sure, Craig, can you just elaborate on for people at home who don't know what the Interfaith Council is?
That's a group of the churches and synagogues in the Easton, represented by the clergy. And our, Liz and I are members of the Temple Chai Shalom here in Easton. And so I've reached out to Rabbi Ken Carr to see if he would bring that information to his colleagues in Easton, in the Interfaith Council, to see if they would partner with the Human Rights Committee on these two endeavors.
I don't, I think that it's really exciting that our community has that council. It's not very common, and for all of our religious leaders or any religious leaders that are interested in participating in that council, it's great for them to share ideas. So I'm happy to hear that, and it's a really good idea that you reached out to them, Craig.
Yeah, and I had spoken with Rabbi Carr in the past with initiatives, reaching out to the Interfaith Council. And this is at least, I would say, a dozen members in there. Seems surprising that we have that much in Easton, but we do. And it is an active and vibrant group. So I'm glad, Craig, thank you for bringing that up. They're enthusiastic to partner on the listening session, and that is a good vehicle to reach a lot of people, particularly those who may identify and walk in the world as Christians, to hear from people who are walking in the world a different way. And Craig also mentioned the Cultural Council application. So we are submitting an application to the Cultural Council to fund the creation of the stickers and the decals and the magnets. We anticipate it will be around $800 right now to seed probably about 600 individual items, between stickers and decals and magnets, to then distribute around town with some leftover publicity information. One other partnership or aspect I wanted to emphasize is that Raising Multicultural Kids, who I refer to as RMK, they have generously agreed to provide prizes for the finalist entries. So again, we hope to have about five finalists. So RMK will be providing the prizes, and they also will be working with the Human Rights Committee to create a proclamation so that when particularly you go to a business, the business understands what the sticker represents. And it would essentially be a statement that's similar to the HRC mission statement, but that says, you know, by displaying this sticker, I stand up for these values and I will actively stand against, you know, bigotry and tolerance hate.
You know, lately, there's been a lot of communities and businesses and organizations that have been doing a declaration of anti-racism on their websites. And we talked about that and thought about how we wanted to, you know, approach that in Easton. And I think that one of the things that I feel uncomfortable with is that some organizations just put a statement on and that's it. They check the box off and, you know, it's just a piece of paper that sits there. So the actionable steps that you're taking to demonstrate what an anti-racist community looks like is really, really important. And I really appreciate that. I think having a declaration is great and, you know, aspire to do that as well. But it doesn't mean anything if you don't have the actions behind it to demonstrate what an anti-racist community is. So thank you very much for that.
I think, Dottie, that, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Mark.
Is, you're using the community in the creation of it. You're not just doing it as the Human Rights Committee. You're actually using the community to be involved in the creation of it, and I think that's incredible.
Thank you, yeah, that was very important, particularly the school age community. You know, we want students to be aware that this is a group in town, that there are people in town that stand up for these values, particularly because the school age community is particularly vulnerable to encountering hate group messaging online. And so we want to make sure they are as aware of our group as the adults in their life are.
Wondering at this point, I know that the grant proposal is a reimbursement grant from the Cultural Council. So I'm wondering if the Board would entertain using a portion of the Stonehill money that was given to the town that has not been allocated yet to help in covering some of the costs of the, of this project, specifically the development of the stickers and the magnets, et cetera.
I wouldn't have a problem doing that, but I'd like to get a, you know, get a full cost of what that really looks like so that we can make sure that we have the appropriate number when we look at that.
All right, that's fair.
You don't need to do anything with that tonight, right?
No, no. I just wanted to plant the seed.
Okay. Because we wouldn't have a vote like that scheduled on the agenda, so we would.
Right.
But if you let us know what the total cost of the project is, then we can bring it back before the Board and take a look at it.
Okay, I'm sure Liz can do that.
I would be happy to. Thank you very much for the consideration, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Liz. And, you know, you have such a great group of people on that committee. And even more so than that, your outreach is really to other volunteers and added capacity with people that might not necessarily sit on the committee, but help out when they can. And the alliances that you've made with Stonehill and Raising Multicultural Kids, the library, the Y, the Alliance Club, is really incredible. So thank you for all the great work, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, we're happy to have good partners with the Select Board. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz, great work.
So next, we have some contract awards. The first contract award is with the Easton Fire Department.
Sure, so attached in your packet, there's a memo and a contract submitted by Chief Partridge for a new 2020 pickup truck with equipment for the department. I think there's a typo in there, says 2088 Crown Vic. It's actually a 2008, and this funding was just approved last Monday at Town Meeting. Couldn't have been soon enough, because the other one was just taken off the road a week ago, because it failed inspection. So this is the contract for its replacement. It's on state bid list, so it's exempt from the bidding process. Funding is available from Town Meeting, and I recommend your approval.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, just one quick question. It indicates that Chief Partridge is requesting that the Select Board approve the 2008 vehicle's surplus. What happens when you, when you do that, Connor, in terms of?
Sorry, that's a good question, that. Two memos kind of had cross wires there. So I actually, as the Chief Procurement Officer, can administratively declare supplies as surplus. So the Board doesn't actually need to take any action on that. The only request for you is for approval of the contract. But for your, to answer your question, what happens is that, under state procurement law, department heads request of their Chief Procurement Officer in the town or city to determine that something is surplus, because it's passed its useful life or no longer has any real function for the agency. And they cannot get rid of it, so to speak. They can't put it on municipal or some other type of auction website unless and until that happens. And so they usually submit a request with some typically minor documentation, such as this is a 2008 vehicle that's off the road now because it's failed inspection and has no utility from the department. I would approve that, and then they put it on something like a municipal. Different departments have different revolving accounts for bid sales. I think Public Works has one. It doesn't generate tons of money, because these are usually, by the time something reaches surplus, it's end of life. So it's a couple of bucks. It goes into a revolving account typically to be applied towards vehicles.
Thank you.
No problem.
So would somebody like to make a motion to award the contract for a 2020 Chevy pickup truck and equipment to Liberty Chevrolet in the amount of, let's say, $51,000?
So moved.
Second, Broussard?
Barger Broussard, and for a vote, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. Next, we have a contract amendment with the DPW for Woodard and Curran.
Yes, so we actually, Items 5, 6, and to a lesser degree, 7, all are very specific to Public Works. So I believe DPW Director Dave Field, here he is, is gonna join us and walk us through those contracts. Dave, you want to walk us through a SCADA acquisition, including what is SCADA?
Sure. Good evening, Dave Field, Director of Public Works. The first item here is an amendment with Woodard and Curran for $35,000 to upgrade this existing SCADA platform. SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. This is the platform that runs and monitors our wastewater treatment system. We also have a system like this on water. Related to the new pump station at Five Corners and the need to have automated reporting to the Town of Mansfield through our intermunicipal, through our IMA with them, we need to upgrade our eight-year-old SCADA system to a newer platform. And that's what this amendment will cover. The funding for this is in the existing appropriation. There is ample funds available to cover this cost, and I recommend that we proceed with it. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Does the upgrade to that SCADA system in Five Corners also upgrade the SCADA in the other wastewater treatment facilities?
Yes, so this actually resides at the Northeastern Village wastewater treatment plant, and it controls those pump stations at Northeastern Village, the plant itself, Queeset, and Five Corners. So when we upgrade that system, that system's eight years old, and anytime, any technological platform after eight years usually needs some upgrading. So this is a good opportunity to get us onto the newest platform.
Sure, and it's still, it's still, there's plenty of money in that budget. We're not going over budget by doing.
Nope, we're not going to go over budget at all.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you for explaining what SCADA was. I had no idea what that, what that meant, so I appreciate that.
I apologize for the acronyms in advance.
So with no other questions, if somebody would like to make a motion to award Contract Amendment Number 1 to Woodard and Curran for additional work related to the SCADA upgrades for the wastewater supervisory control and data acquisition system related to the Five Corners Sewer Project, not to exceed $35,000?
So moved, Barger.
Broussard?
Barger Broussard, and for the vote?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes. Terrific. The next item for discussion and vote is Five Corner Sewer Project, Final Change Order Number 4-C, 4-C Not Incorporated.
Thank you, and I think, Mike, if you could promote Jack Troital from Woodard and Curran, in case there's any questions, that'd be appreciated. So this is a change order. Basically, we have extra work items that we've incorporated into the project, and then a lot of balancing change orders. And so the overall increase to the contract with C Not Incorporated is about $151,000. And Jack is here too, from Woodard and Curran. If there are any questions specific to the change order, I'd be happy to go through them and try to answer any questions you have.
This, Dave, for the Board's edification, this is associated with the Five Corner Sewer Project that's now wrapped up. This is a final kind of closeout change order. That's a net result of 151,000.
This is a final kind of closeout change order. Um, that's a res, a net result of a hundred and fifty-one thousand. But like the SCADA piece associated with design that you just mentioned, this is still well within and under the project budget, right?
That's correct.
And also this doesn't impact or change that the projected betterments are still um, I think nineteen-five uh, thousand plus a, a couple uh, grand uh, as the range. This is not moving that range.
That's correct. So the, the overall cost of the construction has gone up approximately uh, six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in the, through the course of construction. But our cost of police details came in lower than anticipated. We had contingency. So overall, our construction estimate is slightly lower um, than we originally planned. And then we also have um, some appropriations that came in uh, after the fact, like the uh, SR, I'm sorry, the uh, Mass Works grant of one point five million dollars. So our initial sewer appropriation was thirteen point five million. We have a balance of five million in that account now, so uh, we're well under um, in all respects.
Can you walk through the changes just for the public's edification, Dave?
Sure. Uh, Jack, do you wanna just go through those real quick? Do you mind, Jack?
Yeah, not a problem. Thanks, Steve. Um, yeah, so as Dave mentioned, there were a lot of balancing change items. So that's on unit price costs. Um, some exceed and some under run. But a quick listing, there was some additional sidewalk on Bay Road. Um, it was quite a bit of sidewalk, forty-nine thousand. Um, readjusting the castings for some of the paving work. Um, that's when they raise and lower um, to meet the interim paving. And some traffic loops for the traffic signals, that was thirty-five thousand. Um, we added an odor control scrubber at the pump station. That was twenty-five thousand. Um, removal of the traffic signals, um, but keeping those for DPW was five thousand. Um, some miscellaneous work for mailboxes and other, other repairs was, was three thousand dollars. Um, on the, on the balancing portion, um, we carry a significant um, amount for price escalations and, and in the current economy, we saw um, a de-escalation. So there was what we had reserved and a reduction. So that was, that was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. That was um, significant. Also, we didn't use um, we didn't do as much drainage um, restoration and repairs we thought we might need to. Um, that was a hundred thousand dollar balance. Um, a small amount for some water quantities. Um, and then there was an addition of um, paving and curbing for a hu, uh, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand um, for additional pavement reclaim. So that, that, that covers the, the total, but there was a lot of balancing out in it. Um, and overall, between the water and the sewer work, um, like Dave said, the, the sewer ends up being pretty much right where we, where we started from.
Thank you, Jack.
Any other questions?
I, I just have a question on the um, uh, scrubber for odor removal, uh, twenty-five thousand. So uh, that's gonna be installed in January twenty twenty-one?
Correct. Yeah, we were, yeah, we're waiting for that to um, to arrive so it can be installed.
So if there is uh, even a slight odor there now, that should really uh, quell that almost entirely?
Exactly. Yeah, we had a smaller pass, yeah, we had a smaller passive unit um, with, with um, activated carbon that would clean the air. Um, but we're still experiencing um, some odors beyond that. So this one has a much larger, it's like a fifty-five gallon drum with, with carbon in it and a blower that, that sucks the air through it and treats it. So yeah.
Now, on, on something like that, I would think if uh, it sucks the air and it treats it, it has a filtration system that needs to be changed and maintained. Would that be correct?
Yeah, that, that, the media in, in the unit, um, yeah, it's pretty much six months to a year. Um, you just have to replace the carbon.
Okay, um, is, do we know that, is that a, a small cost that'll be covered by uh, the Water Department and, you know?
Yeah, it would be in the, the um, the sewer operating costs. Um, for instance, at Northeastern Village Treatment Plant, um, I think there's two or three um, slightly larger carbon scrubbers. So it's the same type of material that can be switched out like, like you have up there.
Great. Glad to hear that.
Okay, so if there's no other questions, if somebody would like to make a motion to award uh, the final change order number four to C Not Incorporated in the amount of um, one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars and change the contract times, um, the final completion date changed from September sixth, twenty twenty to January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one?
So moved, Barge.
Second, Broussard?
Barge Broussard, back to you, Craig.
Barge, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Full Janetti, yes. And thank you, Jack, for being here tonight and for all the great work that you did on this project. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dave.
So the next item up for discussion is um, the discussion and vote for the determination of sole source proprietary procurement for fire alarm by Edwards EST three to be utilized at the Blanche A Ames Elementary School Project.
Sure, thank you, Donnie. So in your packet, there's a memo submitted by Walter Hartley, who is with uh, PMA Consultants. Uh, here's Walter, uh, who are our owner's project manager, um, behalf of the town for the MSBA uh, early elementary school project, now known as the Blanche Ames uh, Elementary School Project. Uh, under procurement law, cities and towns can um, do what's called a so, sole source procurement, which is to pick, basically pick the specs and the provider uh, with certain circumstances being met. And in this one, we have uh, a manufacturer uh, who provides the fire alarm systems uh, in all of our schools already. Uh, so it makes a lot of good safety sense that the fire alarm in, uh, system installed in the forthcoming school uh, utilize those same proprietary specs uh, which our Public Works and first responders are already all trained on. So uh, the, the memo gets into kind of the legalese of that, but that's really the gist is in order for uh, the town to move forward with this, um, uh, we need, the select board as the executive board would need to take a vote. Um, a, a very specific one we put in your packet, uh, making a determination that a sole source procurement is the right thing to do here. So Walter, I don't know if there's more you wanna add to that or if the board has any questions. Walter uh, obviously has a much higher level of technical knowledge on this than I do.
I think uh, Connor did a great job explaining it, but if you guys have any quick questions further than that, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
Do you have a question? Um, I'm sorry, did I, did I speak out of turn? I didn't think anybody was going, Donnie.
No, go ahead.
Um, I, it completely makes sense to me. Um, and I'm glad, thank you for the explanation because I was a little bit lost prior to that. And this does make sense. How do you ensure that um, we're getting a fair price if it's sole source?
That's the one piece that um, you are limited on. Um, so the entire, the remainder of the contract is, is gonna require three equals. Uh, what we're going to do, you, you still get a little bit of comp, competitive pricing. Um, it'll be in the bid. Um, it'll be up to the general contractor and the fire alarm. Um, the, the fire alarm and sprinkle company that are gonna be working with the GC to make sure their bid's the lowest. So they'll have to procure that item. Um, and they'll still need to be the lowest bid in order to get selected. Um, but it's a, it's a proprietary specification that gets written in. Um, and I, I, I wouldn't expect this one to come with a, I wouldn't expect this one to come with a large cost premium. There, there are others that were considered for this project that were not recommended to move forward um, as proprietary just because of exactly what you're talking about. The, the number on the budget is so large.
Everything just clicked. So it's proprietary, so only they can win it, but they also have to be the best, the lowest at the same time.
The, 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 the subcontractor who is bidding the job, who will have that scope in his package, will still need to be the low bid.
Yep, gotcha. Understood. No, that's, that seems like uh, this, this fail-safe mechanism is built in. Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Uh, Craig, there's a motion in the packet if you wanna.
Sure. If there's, if nobody else has any questions for Walter?
Obviously, Walter, we're both on the committee, but um, should we ask Walter just to have a quick summary for the public's benefit of where we are with this project? Because it's at an exciting point, right?
Sure. Are you prepared, Walter?
I, even if I wasn't, I could do it for you guys. Not a problem.
You wouldn't leave this project, I assume.
Um, so we are in the middle of uh, pre-qualifying our general contractors and our filed subbid trade contractors. Uh, there is a ton of Eastern uh, interest in the Eastern project. Uh, we had a hundred and twenty-eight packages submitted. Typically, we see eighty to ninety on a job this size, so quite a bit. Um, we're expecting quite a bit of competition uh, for the bid. Um, specifically, we have eight highly qualified general contractors, um, some private uh, companies that um, are jumping back into the public uh, market, which is always great because they produce high-quality projects. Um, we are gonna wrap that up in the next week or so. We're chasing a few references. Um, David Twomley and Ken Carlson have been uh, instrumental in getting those reviews done. We had to review a hundred and forty, a hundred and twenty-eight packages um, and then get five references for each of them. So it was quite an ask. Um, we are going to be wrapping up the design um, in the next half a month. Um, and then in late January, we are gonna end up going out to bid. So anyone who is pre-qualified will get a notification and then they'll get an invite to bid. Um, the whole process is gonna be done online through a company, a website called Project Dog. They'll electronically submit their bid and I believe in early February, the trade contractors will be announced. Um, and then two weeks, one and a half weeks to two weeks after that, the general contractors will take the fourteen filed subbids. They'll then craft the remainder of their bid and include the filed subbids that um, have been pre-qualified. They're allowed to whoever, use whoever they want, although they still need to be low overall. So they could pick a painter. If they had three guys in between a thousand dollars, they may pick one that they like to work with more. But typically, we see them go with the low filed subbid on all of them. Um, and then from there, we are gonna be looking for permitting um, on the GC's end and moving into construction in uh, March of twenty twenty-one. Um, you know, kind of the, the next big phase for the project.
We'll break you in March, right?
We, we would expect March, um, you know, pending weather, there could be frozen ground that may push something, you know, uh, out, out a couple of weeks, but yeah.
Sorry, sorry to interject. I just realized for us on the committee, but it dawned on me when the school planning committee's December meeting adjourned. I was like, oh my God, a year ago was, we were just coming off the heels of our uh, first Stonehill town meeting um, for a, for a project. And just how incredible uh, that uh, how far that's come and that it's gonna be construction time soon. It's really exciting.
Great.
Thanks to Dave and uh, Ken. I, I hope I never have to check uh, what's the math on that, six hundred references?
Yeah, it was probably about five, five thousand emails that went out as well. I don't wanna see that person's inbox that sent them for us. It was, it was not fun.
We do have a question from Lauren Loomis at Fort Abbey Road, and she's asking, will the GC proposals be open to the public to observe?
GC proposals be open to the?
When the bid open, when the bid packages are open?
Um, I'm trying to think if, if some, I believe you can click into the website. You just have to log in. And I believe you can see the results. I'll have to double check and I'll, I'll, I'll provide you guys with this. I believe you're able to. I know we're able to. Um, the only difference is we need to go through and do our cursory, cursory review to make sure that before we mark it as the low bid, that we will need to check to make sure they have all of their um, documents in order because there are some um, fatal flaws that people may forget to include in their bid. Um, so before we mark them as the low bid and, and do that, but I, I do believe you can log in and see the results online. But I'll, I'll double check that for you guys.
Yeah, if you could get us that information back and then we can respond back to um, Ms. Loomis with the information on that and make that public as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And Walter, even if, if the live reading of what you would call the apparent low bidder, right? Because you need to do those uh, kind of exclusive checks. Um, that would otherwise disqualify someone once those bids are received, tallied and
They are public, they are public knowledge.
Public record.
They, they are public knowledge. So if, if we were to get a um, a FOIA request, we would absolutely be able to get that information out. Um, it just wouldn't be finalized at that point, but we absolutely could give that information out at that time. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, Craig.
Hey, no other comments. Um, for the purposes of maintenance, employee training, continuity and ease slash familiarity of use, that the select board determines it to be in the best, in the public interest that the fire alarm system to be utilized at the Blanche A Ames Elementary School be a sole, sole source procurement proprietary system manufactured by Edwards EST three.
Can I get it back?
I think we got, I think Tom seconded it.
Oh, okay. It kind of blocked out a little bit. So that's Barge Broussard and for the vote?
Barge, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Thanks so much, Walter. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Walter.
No problem. We'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Next, we have the standing COVID update.
Of course, it's uh, not as uh, fun and exciting as a new school building. Let me pull this up. Thank you, Donnie. So uh, as is our practice, uh, each of your regular meetings since March, uh, just like to keep a board, I'm a public uh, uh, abreast of the information that myself and the rest of the folks uh, on Eastern Emergency Management are looking at um, on an ongoing basis in our uh, planning and response to COVID. So EMA continues to meet every, uh, multiple times a week and stay in touch uh, regarding local trends uh, as well as what is coming down the pipe from uh, the state as far as regulations and requirements. So we'll start big picture and, and whittle our way down as, as we typically do. So as of uh, today, the US remains the epicenter of the pandemic. We are heading towards fifteen million cumulative cases. We're over two hundred and eighty thousand deaths. Uh, the seven-day rolling average of daily cases is nearing two hundred thousand. The seven-day rolling average of deaths is over two thousand and the percent positive rate is over eleven percent. This is a visualization of what that uh, trend data looks like and it's not good. After hitting a low point, um, basically right around Labor Day, where the United States was averaging about thirty thousand cases per day. Um, we're now at a, a rolling, sorry, my last slide must have pulled from a separate data source. According to Johns Hopkins University, we're at a rolling um, average of, of over two hundred thousand cases a day. Um, it's obviously difficult. Uh, some folks, uh, when you point that out, will um, remind you that testing was not uh, as available in the spring, which uh, people who look at this data are aware. And uh, other data though is a little bit more apples to apples, like hospitalizations and deaths. And deaths are at their highest average rate yet uh, in the United States. And hospitalizations unfortunately have more of a triple, be more than a hundred thousand uh, folks in a hospital in the United States. It's the highest it's ever been. This is what this chart looked like the last time we met. Um, or the last time we had this presentation on the sixteenth. So hadn't broke one sixty, a hundred sixty thousand, and uh, now we're into two, two and a quarter. Uh, so it's obviously really um, accelerating. Uh, and this data doesn't really fully incorporate um, the anticipated post Thanksgiving surge yet. So again, in mid-November, when we gave this update, the number of folks in the hospital was sixty-nine thousand and now it's over a hundred. So that's, even that's gone up by almost fifty percent since uh, three weeks ago. This is from the COVID Exit Strategy. This is a website that aggregates publicly available data. This is what uh, the Baker Administration uses for their travel prohibitions. Uh, this map, um, I think I mentioned November has had to add darker colors. It used to only go up to red. This is the test positive rate in each state. Um, now that testing is more available than the spring, uh, test positive is a, a relatively good indicator of the uh, level of community spread. You'll see in Massachusetts, we are now orange uh, spreading uh, the, the test positive rate in our, our state is, is heading, it's either near or over five percent. Uh, you see some of these states are now into this new color coding of purple and black uh, to represent thirty, forty and fifty percent of their tests coming back positive. Thankfully, we are not in those uh, in straits as dire as that. Um, but if you look at our uh, United States from the last time we showed this graph, it has, with almost no exception, uh, worsened, um, including in the Northeast uh, and in Massachusetts.
Any thoughts on what Oregon did? Not that we're concerned about another state, but they went from red to green?
Yeah, that's a good question, and it stuck out to me, too, and I will I will check. But no, I don't know the specifics, but yeah, they are they're the lonely green island right now, except the actual green island of Hawaii. Which I think is one of a few states that we're technically able to travel to without quarantining.
I'm hopeful that it represents that there is at least hope that with focus and commitment, there's an opportunity to reverse some very terrible trends and show meaningful progress. If from November sixteenth, Oregon can go from red, which is close to fifteen percent to green, which is close to two percent.
I will, I will take a look. That's a good point. Thank you.
More intellectual curiosity. You have a lot to do in the wonderful town of Easton in the state of Massachusetts, let alone Oregon, but it was just a personal curiosity.
It's a it's a good point. So in Massachusetts, cases continue to climb. We're two hundred forty seven thousand cases, over eleven thousand deaths. Our seven day average percent positive rate is five point three four percent. And that is significant. That had not been the case. There's a variety of factors driving that, but at least here in Easton, we know from our experiences that higher institutions of higher education were in in many parts of Massachusetts, doing an incredible job with incredibly robust asymptomatic test protocols that are really not being replicated in the general population. And so what we saw, at least at places like Stonehill, was that there was very frequent testing, a large number of negatives, repeat negatives being put into the pool, which helped control spread on campus, which was great. They did a great job, but what that does is it kind of artificially dilutes the towns' general test results and gives you a lower test positive rate than you would have absent higher education. So now that students, I believe, in all institutions in Massachusetts are home post Thanksgiving and they will not be returning, it will be interesting to see what that data trend does without those higher education institution, mostly repeat negatives being put into the pool. So this graph, again, I don't know what ECAT's feed looks like. Hopefully, my face is not covering all of it, but this is from Johns Hopkins University. This is a pretty shocking graphic of the trend in Massachusetts right now and of the the cases and the trajectory of cases in Massachusetts. So the average daily cases in Massachusetts have grown quite rapidly. Back on October first, you know, Massachusetts had seven hundred fifty cases per day. And we've now seen more than four thousand cases a day, four times in a row, the past four days. And the the average is trending over five thousand. The average daily cases in Massachusetts have nearly doubled from two weeks ago. We were hovering in the mid two thousands, and now we're pushing as this graph shows towards the five thousand plus range. And some of that is testing capabilities, but that hasn't changed all that dramatically in two weeks. There are other indicators that we can look at, like hospitalization. In Massachusetts, hospitalization rates have more than quadrupled since Labor Day. There was three hundred twenty two folks in a hospital on Labor Day. There's now fourteen hundred twenty eight and and rising, although thankfully we are not and and hopefully we don't get back to where we were in the spring of nearly thirty nine hundred folks in a hospital in our state. Again, as with the COVID exit strategy, I think it's kind of illuminating just to look at what you were last shown. So this is what that trend graph looked like about three weeks ago. Really of note is how much smaller the spring surge looks now. Three weeks ago, it was, it looked like we had a peak, a valley and a peak, and now it looks like we have a kind of mole hill, a valley and a new peak. It's not heading in a good direction. Travel order is still in effect in Massachusetts. Nearly all states outside of Massachusetts are on that list, so folks are expected to proactively quarantine upon their return. There are still restrictions that were rolled out in early November when these trends were becoming obvious from Governor Baker relating to closing times for entertainment, alcohol, restaurants, gathering sizes at private residences are still ten people, twenty five people outside. The expectation is that folks wear a face mask when they're outside or whenever they are in public, period. Today, Governor Baker held a press conference. He indicated he's going to start doing these more frequently again as these numbers continue to go up. And announced today and last week, a few additional measures the state is taking. I believe Worcester has a field hospital that is now completed in anticipation of this increasing hospitalization surge and a second field hospital was announced last week. Beginning this Friday, although details weren't immediately available at the press conference, certain inpatient elective procedures will start being curtailed again, which has echoes of spring. The governor today announced that the state plans to receive roughly three hundred thousand doses of COVID vaccines pending FDA emergency authorization. By the end of this month, with more detail to follow in the coming days of the distribution plans there. The governor also announced a forthcoming plan to expand the stop the spread testing facilities in the Commonwealth up to a total of twenty five to get to a target of being able to conduct, I believe, a hundred and ten thousand tests a day, I believe, at those sites, but don't quote me on that. I apologize for not having a number, but basically trying to improve testing capabilities and and building up hospital search capabilities in anticipation of the trend of increasing cases and hospitalizations continuing. So in Easton, a couple of meetings ago, I noted that the Commonwealth changed the criteria to their red, yellow, green metrics for communities for risk assessment and stopped producing maps. Journalists are wonderful, and so they now produce it at W B U R. So they take the data and they make their own map now. So you will see Easton is yellow. We are in the moderate risk category, I suppose, if you want to put that tag on it. And we are surrounded, particularly in the South Coast, quite significant amount of high risk communities. We will go back and fetch earlier iterations of this from W B U R. But this is worsening, not necessarily in Easton. We've been yellow for the past four weeks. But the the state is getting increasingly red, as it did before the metrics were changed last time. This is a graph of Easton's cumulative cases, which for a period of time between July and early October, what looked kind of like a plateau, and unfortunately, it no longer does. From a Department of Public Health's data as of last week on the second, we had had accumulated five hundred and eighty four cases in Easton. Your last meeting, that number stood at four hundred and thirty three. Twenty, nearly twenty percent of all of our cases were confirmed in a two week period in November. And this graph is the moving average of biweekly cases in Easton, and you can see a large spike in the spring from the surge again. That was when there was significantly less testing. So for cases themselves, you don't necessarily draw one to one corollary. But you can see from the August, September, October, November trend that this is not good. The biweekly case growth in Easton is at the highest point now that it's ever been. Again, there's a lot better testing, but that's still significant. The average biweekly case growth in October, so on average, every two weeks, health department in Easton was getting fifteen and a quarter cases confirmed. That figure jumped fourfold to an average biweekly case growth of sixty three in November, with the last two weeks hitting a hundred and ninety and ninety six respectively. So again, you don't want to draw necessarily apples to apples comparisons on test positive cases from the spring to now, but while the amount of tests available in spring is not comparable to today, the amount of tests available, say, in October is not so dramatically different that you could try to discount this level of increase as just about testing. It's not. There is more COVID spreading as folks head inside for the winter months. We are now tracking, and I will keep this graph updated, what our test positive rate is. Director Kennedy and I have noted a couple of these meetings, and I'm going to continue to do so. That as Stonehill's tests come out of our data pool, so to speak, now that those students have been sent home, we anticipate our test positive rate is going to go up, not necessarily solely because cases are increasing, but actually a kind of compounding function of increasing cases and fewer repeat negatives, because they will no longer be conducting that level of testing at Stonehill. So around Labor Day, our test positive rate, you can actually see before school started in late August, our test positive rate was hovering just below one percent. School began, Stonehill's operation began in early September, and the test positive rate plummeted to about, I think it got down to point two percent in some cases. And now that cases are climbing and Stonehill is no longer operating and we won't have those negative tests there, you are going to see our test rate start to climb up. So where you see it now is nearing two percent. That is still quite a bit better than the statewide average of five plus percent, but it is it is increasing. So this is the actual raw data we use to build these graphs. I know this is way too text heavy for any real utility on a PowerPoint. We included here more for transparency purposes because this gets rerun on television and the press can screen grab it. These are some key data points we keep an eye on. And you can see, if you look at the cumulative case growth, it took August, September, Octo- in October and into November, it took three months to go from three to four hundred total cases in Easton. And then it took three weeks to go from four to five hundred. So I'm not saying all this to sound alarming, say, there's something happening in Easton that's not happening everywhere. What's happening throughout the Commonwealth is happening here is a more apt way to look at it, which is that COVID is a highly contagious illness and folks who are inside or who aren't wearing masks stand at risk to spread it. And so people need to continue, although everyone's at their most exhausted point to take it really seriously. You know, the governor routinely points to kind of informal gatherings and parties. Everyone likes to think they kind of have their bubble that they trust, but if your bubble has six people and that bubble has six people that aren't you, it adds, it it compounds and adds up to dozens and dozens or hundreds of people very, very, very quickly. So folks need to continue to do the right things. Even though everyone is exhausted, everyone wants this to just be over. There's good news if the vaccines are on the way, but this is the the kind of dark winter that health experts had forecast that rates would increase, that as people moved inside, it would spread. So people really need to continue to be vigilant and and keep those steps in place of wearing a mask when you're not in your house, basically. And even if you're in your house, you have company coming over. I know it feels weird when your mem is in your house to put a mask on, but that's the right thing to do. We we all need to be doing these things. People should be limiting their unnecessary gatherings and keeping their distance, even though it's obviously very hard in the holidays. So we'll keep a close eye on that, and we're we're following a few state and federal things really closely that I'll get into now. You know, we are a status of municipal services. It contrary to my PowerPoint, we're not just kind of doom scrolling COVID data and putting depressing slides together. We have a lot of of good work going on that I'm happy to share some of. So Easton is a member to an ongoing regional public health task force started by Mayor Sullivan in Brockton of managers and mayors or I think the mayor and town managers, as well as Dr. Herman from Good Sam, formerly of Good Sam Eastern Resident as his health advisor to take a look at regional responses, different policy responses, things like opening or closings of town offices, for example, things within our control. So Easton is on that task force and will stay on that. I myself and Director Kennedy attended the kickoff meeting. We'll continue to do so through the winter. The Economic Development Council last week hosted a winter spaces planning session with local businesses and chambers of commerce to strategize for how we can try to do the kind of dual, the balancing act of supporting the local economy while staying safe, because obviously it's really tough right now. I think particularly for the governors of the United States, having to make these decisions on what the right level of COVID restriction is when right now there is no support from the federal government, no new relief that would be necessary before anyone really could make any tougher calls on what's allowed. And so we are trying to do our part on a local level, Mark and Dottie, you know, if you want to weigh in on that to create forums for businesses who are really doing everything they can to to offer safe and very, very different experiences for folks, including being outdoors through the winter, which you know, you there may be a sort of hesitation of, oh, it's cold, but it's try really trying to just find ways to help people out while staying safe. Mark, Dottie, you want to add anything to that?
I I'll I can add just a little bit. So yeah, the Economic Development Council is working with a number of groups and businesses in town. And it's ongoing, the these planning sessions, I think that there's another one scheduled this week. But it's to support local business, to highlight businesses that have, you know, safety protocols in place, outdoor spaces. You know, the the original intent of what we were going to do is slightly changed to support the businesses, but also do it safely and to let people know that, you know, just because the cold weather is coming doesn't mean businesses aren't open. It doesn't mean they're not safe. It doesn't mean they're not taking measures to be outside and safe at the same time. You know, there is a number of restaurants in town that do have outdoor seating, and it is safe and it is warm. But you know, in in one of those meetings, Connor, I think you said it best, or perhaps it was your other half that said it best. There's no such thing as bad weather. There's just inappropriate clothing. And it's to get this change in mentality out to people that just because winter is coming doesn't mean business is not is not still in in operation. It not only is in operation, but it really needs support at at a local level. So and to do it safely. And obviously, that's the most important thing is that this be safe, especially given what's happening out there. Dottie, if I missed anything.
I would just add that there have been certain grants that have come through, and Stephanie has a list of the small businesses. You know, as as good of a list as we can have. So if there are businesses out there that don't get emails from us and you're watching, make sure you let us know so that you can get on the list, because when we see grants come up, we're emailing them out to, there was a a grant for women owned restaurants, and we sent that out. There was another grant with the Mass Growth Capital Fund that were grants of up to twenty five thousand dollars for, I believe, five or less employees and then up to seventy five thousand dollars for larger groups of employees, the the size of the business. They had overwhelming submissions for it, and so they're trying to figure out how to how to get that money out into the hands of the people. So we're doing our best to make sure that we're we're looking and uncovering every stone possible that that there's, if there's an opportunity to help support our businesses with grants, that we're getting that information to them.
If I could just add to that, too, you know, based off of what Dottie said, if if you're a business, you know, email the Economic Development Council. You can email myself or anybody on this board, and we'll get you these these grants. Dottie, I'm almost positive knows every single grant this state has at the moment it comes out, and she is not shy about sharing it. So you know, you will know of any grant that's available to you to enhance your business, and Dottie is on the pulse of it, for sure.
Thanks. And even sometimes brainstorming, you know, sometimes businesses, they're they're overwhelmed. You know, we had Neil was talking, they're working seven by twenty four to keep their business going. And you know, for some of the businesses that might need a little bit of creativity to be able to brainstorm some of the challenges with not only other businesses, but even this board or even the Economic Development Council. There was one company that I spoke with specifically, not in Easton, but they were, they did indoor sports, and so they were one of the last businesses to be able to open. And, you know, lost many, many months of revenue and then thinking, well, they might have to shut down again in the winter. Well, what could you do outside if you're a place that has kids' sports, right? You could do some outdoor snow making activities or you know, outdoor fun family activities. And and the person that I was speaking to didn't even really think of that because they're so overwhelmed with business ideas. So sometimes we can share things that we know that other businesses are doing in other areas that might be specific to your type of organization. And sometimes just brainstorming things out can really, really help. So we're here for you.
I think a really good thing that came out of that, which is always helpful for me to hear from an outside perspective, is certain things that I or we are not communicating enough, and and I think Donna's in here that, for instance, outdoor dining has been extended by the select board indefinitely, right? There was a lot of regional news coverage last week, a week before, that outdoor dining was ending because that's what the city of Boston is doing. And so obviously, larger news companies can only cover so much, so that's where a lot of the energy went, and you're, a lot of people walking around, they have NPR on or whatever on, they hear outdoor dining is ending, and they just assume that's everywhere. And I learned that, that knowledge that it has been extended indefinitely by this board was not necessarily commonplace. So making sure we get that information out there for folks to understand that we're, we're doing what we can to try to help support those businesses, even to Mark's point, that means, you know, we put a sweater on when you're outside. So.
Connor, we didn't vote to suspend it indefinitely. The board voted to suspend it, I mean, to, to keep outdoor dining up to sixty days after the governor ends the declaration of the state of emergency. So not indefinite. I hope it happens faster than that, but.
A little, a little while longer, though.
Your point is taken, that we, we maximize that for our communities.
Thank you. Sorry for that, that mistake on my part. So we're working on those things. Here, the board is working on behalf of folks, try to do what we can, where we can. Town offices are still providing remote services during regular hours. We do have the ability for folks, if they have a need that somehow can't be met remotely, to schedule an appointment to take care of that. The Council on Aging and Department of Health and Community Services last week launched what they're calling a Friendly Caller Program. This got a lot of coverage on social media. I think it's a great idea. Give a lot of credit to Kristin, Ann, and Corey over at Health and Community Services. This is going to be a kind of rolling program where enrollees who sign up by calling the Council on Aging will be called on a weekly basis by volunteers being coordinated by the Council on Aging, just to have someone basically keep human contact and stay in touch and fight back against the already exhausting isolation of COVID that is going to be a real challenge this winter. So this is a program that Kristin's department's heading up, just trying to basically help neighbors connect and just check in, which is, which is really important, and particularly for older residents, high, folks who are at higher risk for COVID, you know, some going out can, it can be a challenge. And so the isolation can be really severe, so we're hoping that this puts a little bit of a dent in that for some folks, and we encourage anyone who wants to sign themselves or a loved one up to participate and receive those ongoing weekly calls, to call the Council on Aging at five oh eight two three zero zero six nine zero. And then just closing out, looking at public health and safety planning. Health Community Services and public schools communicate every day and maintain constant communication, keeping track on the, the school management aspect of this. Health Community Services now has interns helping us out to supplement contact tracing, which, as you can tell from our numbers, is a pretty critical need. We are relying pretty heavily on the state contact tracing collaborative. At this point, we do not have the human resources to do one hundred cases in two weeks. It's just not possible. So thankfully, the Baker administration and the state have scaled up the CTC. You know, that ad campaign, I think, has ended, but if you do see that call on your phone, please answer it and follow up with contact tracers. Public Safety and Works remain fully operational. We've started having snow. We have our protocols in place for folks to do those things safely. We had a town meeting last week where budget amendments were approved to boost our finance committee reserves in case Congress fails to act and, and does not adopt much-needed stimulus. And, and so myself and the folks on the emergency management team are closely monitoring that. I just saw news today. I guess Congress will pass a one-week stopgap funding to get another week out and try to get some kind of deal done, hopefully next week. Saying it's long overdue does not do it justice. You know, the Easton and every city in town in, in the United States stands to lose access to critical cares funding on December thirtieth, if Congress does not extend that. I know unfortunately for some, whether or not to include state and municipal funding in the stimulus, it has turned into a partisan issue, which is absurd. And has been a sticking point. So hopefully, they put their heads together and get something done shortly, because if not, that will have a pretty severe negative financial consequences for the country, which, you know, we don't need to explain to small business owners. They're, they're holding on and waiting, too, as are labor groups and hospitals and everyone else. So hopefully, they, they do their job soon, because the clock's running out. If they don't, thankfully, town meeting voters last week were amenable to the recommendations we put forward to hedge against that, and we'll have money prepared to try to offset some of that. So we're, we're closely keeping an eye on that, and hopefully by the next time I give one of these updates in two weeks, there's something good to say there. We're also keeping a close eye on, and we will follow very closely with Governor Baker's updates on vaccine distribution planning. And in the coming weeks and months, we'll probably have a lot more to say on that, too. So that's what I have, but can't go through all that data and not remind everyone, please, you know, when you were leaving your house, or if you're having any guests in your house who aren't your immediate family, please do the right thing and put a mask on for the sake of healthcare workers, first responders, and contact tracers and, and the, the community. Thank you. So I'm happy to take any questions. There are any.
Thank you, Connor.
Connor? Then we will go on. Do you have any other town administrator notes, Connor?
I do not.
Any select board notes? I have a couple of things that I wanted to mention. First of all, it feels like it was a long time ago, but last week was our town meeting, and I just want to thank the people that did attend town meeting. We appreciate, we hope we felt safe with all of the precautions that were taken. And, you know, again, another shout out of thank you to our public safety, to our town clerk's office, and to our, our health department for making everything run so smoothly. And for people that did come out to vote, it's important that we conduct that business, and we were able to do so. So this board really appreciates it. A couple of things that I just picked up out of the town crier. If you're not registered for those subscriptions, you may want to do it, because there's always some interesting things in there that are very timely. You can sign up for the subscription. It's a weekly email, and go to the town's website, and it's on the front page. The week of December fourteenth is bulky item pickup. That's always a very popular question for, if you're a waste management customer through the town, you can put out one large item on curbside on your regular trash day to be picked up at no charge. And if you go to the website, you'll see what kind of things can be put out. Also, interestingly enough, this year, they said with the media, because of COVID, a lot of people got dogs. So dog, your dogs have to be licensed, and dog licensing is available. You can do it online. I already got my dog licensed.
I gotta do that. I, I just got a dog, and I have to do that. I'm glad you said it had to be on, we can do it online.
Yep. It's real easy. I did it last week. It's really easy.
Excellent.
It's important, because that's how the town keeps an eye to make sure that it has their rabies shots, which are very important. And then the third item I wanted to mention is the temporary grant assistance is still available for low-income qualified Eastern renters through the Affordable Housing Trust. So if you're struggling with your rent, reach out to the Affordable Housing Trust or look online, and there is temporary grant assistance that's available until that money runs out. So we hope everybody is doing well, hanging in there through this, and I, hopefully, we will get through this winter quickly. So thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. And with that, if somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Oof, Barger.
Second, Broussard.
Barger, Broussard, and all in favor, Craig?
Barger, yes.
King, yes.
I am, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thanks, everyone. Have a great week.
Stay safe, everybody. Bye.